Good morning. We're going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th Commissioners' Meeting, the October 14th Public Hearing, the October 14th Special Commissioners' Meeting, and the October 15th Public Hearing.
Second motion.
A motion and a second. Are there any revisions or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next up, we have, excuse me, a recognition for a retirement. This is for Kyle White for her years of service with the OSU Extension at Medina County. A little bit, excuse me, a little bit about Kyle and her career. Kyle has spent her career building things, programs, partnerships, and opportunities that make a difference in Medina County and beyond. She has 30 years of experience in higher education, sales, marketing, and consulting. She brought that expertise and creativity to OSU Extension where she's focused on community development, workforce education, and youth programming. Kyle is a certified Gallup Strengths Coach and is a certified in Appreciative Inquiry through Case Western Reserve University. She's guided countless organizations, schools, and teams in finding their strengths, writing grants, and understanding workplace dynamics to build stronger organizations and cultures. She's especially proud of her efforts to explore STEM opportunities for youth in local schools and libraries, from chick embryology to micro works through 4H. Kyle's become known for her energy, vision, and her collaborative spirit, and she leaves behind a legacy of connection, innovation, and community impact. The Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize Kyle for her dedicated service to OSU Extension and her impact on Medina County. So Kyle, we have a certificate of recognition. I'd like you to come up and we can present it to you.
Thanks, Eric.
Yes.
Thanks for all your years. Thank you.
Make sure the family gets their pictures, too.
Perfect, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, too?
I would. That would be great. Yeah, it's a daughter thing. I just, I just have to say it's been the greatest honor to be able to work in this position, to be able to serve Medina and to work with people I've worked with and to end my career like this. So I'm so grateful. I've got a great family here today, Pax, Easton, Christie, my son Scott, or my husband, Bill. Not my son Scott, he's not my son, he's my husband. And I'm just grateful. So, thank you, and this is not the end. It's a new beginning, and I'm really looking forward to the next chapter, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have a public comment regarding pending resolutions. Is there anything regarding our pending resolutions for today? Seeing nothing, we will move on to our resolutions. And we will start with the Highway Engineer, represented today by Dan Becker. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning. One resolution for your consideration. The resolution is approving the change order number one to the 2025 multi-bridge deck replacement project.
I make motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, too. Next up is our Sanitary Engineer, Jeremy Cinco.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Just one resolution for consideration today, and that is amending the sanitary sewer and water debt charges. That would be a $4.50 increase on the sewer debt fee beginning January 1. And on the water debt side, that would be a $2 per month increase per equivalent meter ratio, and that would also be on January 1st of 2026.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion? These were, two of the hearings that we had last week were related to these additional charges. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. There you go. Thanks, Jeremy. Next up is Holly Mirren from our Human Resources Department. Morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our Personnel Changes Resolution today, we have one new hire at Job and Family Services, one promotion at Solid Waste District, four rate increases, one in maintenance, one at Senior and Adult Services, one at Job and Family Services, and one in Commissioners, one position control number change in Transit, one position change in Transit, and one leave of absence at County Home. Second resolution is amending the Table of Organization for the Solid Waste District.
You've got the third, Holly.
Third.
And the health plan. Health plan funding rates.
Oh, I thought that was going to him. Okay, sorry. The third resolution is amending the health plan funding rates reflecting the Board of DD rates.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, we have, representing Finance today, is Matt Springer.
Good morning.
Morning, Matt.
So, yeah, standing in for Finance Director this morning. He has 13 resolutions. The first one is amending the Appropriations Resolution. Second one is amending the 2025 Appropriations Resolution and transferring appropriations. Third is an expenditure adjustment for various funds. We have, fourth resolution is a revenue adjustment for various funds. The fifth is a cash transfer for various funds, and you'll notice in that, that's part of our GIS consolidation efforts. So there's $200,000 that is being transferred out from the RPTT Fund, and then $200,000 from the REA Fund. The sixth resolution is the creation of a GIS Fund and authorizing appropriations. Again, that's a collaboration between the Commissioner's Office, the Auditor's Office, Highway Engineers, and several others. Seventh resolution is the creation of a Safe Communities Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Fund. This is a grant through the Department of Public Safety. The eighth resolution is the creation of a Safe Communities Impaired Driving Enforcement Program Fund, very similar, another grant. Approving, I'm sorry, nine is approving a grants agreement between the Ohio Department of Medicaid and Family First Council. Tenth resolution is authorizing the purchase of 6,800 gallons of unleaded gasoline. The low bid was from Centerra at $1.67 per gallon. The eleventh resolution is allowing expenses for the County Engineers' Office. This is something they do on an annual basis to ensure that all their staff members are CPR-trained. Twelfth resolution is allowing expenses for county officials. There is nothing that is out of state in this resolution. And thirteen and final is the approval of the weekly bills in the amount of $2,495,117.97.
I'll make motion to approve the thirteen resolutions.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make note of the initiative with the single GIS platform, and just want to thank the Auditor's Office, the Highway Engineer, and the other departments that are involved with this. This is the kind of thing where basically we have one uniformed GIS platform, obviously multiple data that gets shared, but one platform rather than several platforms. It makes sense in terms of technology as well as efficiency, and I'll just make another editorial comment. We don't need the state of Ohio to tell us we have to mandate working together and consolidating and being efficient. We do it naturally.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
And looks like you're staying up here, Matt, for the County Administrator.
This one will be a little bit quicker. This is just one resolution. This is authorizing a change order number one. This is associated with the elevator replacement project at the Human Service Center. This change order is to comply with contractual obligations as it relates to tariff increases.
I make motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Department Updates with Richard Nelson from the Building Department. Morning, Richard.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, Building Department Report for the month of September. We had value of, overall value of construction was quite strong at $27 million. Brings the year-to-date value at just 1.5% below last year at this time. And new home costs back to a kind of a normal at $436,000. Brings the year-to-date average down to $455,000, which was down from $457,000 last month because it was some big homes built last, the previous month. Thirty-three new home starts for September is a couple below the five-year average, but still pretty good. Six of those were in Wadsworth City, by the way. Second page is receipts for the month of September, 5% above last September, which is moving in the right direction. And year-to-date receipts on the third page is still just 2% under last year at this time. Moving on to page fours, residential permits by townships and villages in the city of And page fives, commercial permits issued by villages and townships. And last, page six is the list of commercial projects and their value and their use groups. Other than that, we're doing okay. Our review times are still good, around 20 days for commercial and four or five days for residential. So we're plugging along.
Good. Questions?
Good. Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You, too. And we have Bethany Dentler here from Economic Development. Morning, Bethany.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a resolution and a report for you today. So the resolution is to approve a Community Reinvestment Area Agreement and a Community Reinvestment Area Compensation Agreement with Energy Asset Group. They're doing a project in Sharon Township. Sharon Township has reviewed and approved the agreement last Tuesday, and the school board also met and approved the compensation agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for my report, it has been a busy year so far. Just reporting through the first three quarters, we've seen a very healthy amount of economic development activity actually topping where we were last year at this time. Countywide, we're seeing over $300 million in new capital investments by companies, which have also committed to the creation of nearly 390 new jobs in Medina County with $14 million in new annual payroll. We also are tracking and working on a number of other projects that are in the pipeline that we expect to close before the end of the year. Overall, based on the conversations that we're having with companies, it seems Medina County's economy is weathering quite well, the headwinds that businesses are facing still from tariff and some interest rate uncertainty. Some companies, particularly those that serve the technology sectors, are doing very well. As you know, Medina County's companies, particularly manufacturers, are eager to share what's going on behind closed doors so they can attract future workers. And to that end, we had a very successful made-in-Medina County event on Friday, October 3rd. To register, to celebrate National Manufacturing Day, we had over 300 tours available for 18 different manufacturing facilities throughout the county, and that was up from last year in both number of tours and companies that participated. Unemployment rates continue to stay low in Medina County. As of August of this year, Medina County's unemployment rate has dropped to 3.2%. We are tied with Geogee County for the lowest unemployment rate in the state. It used to be that having a low unemployment rate was a good thing. I don't think it's a good thing because it says that we've got, we don't have enough people in the workforce. Medina County is well below the 4.9% average unemployment level in the state and the 4.5% national unemployment rate. So in Medina County, I think this is a good, a good sign. We did see an increased number of people in the labor force, up to 100,000, 102,800, and the latest report shows that 3,300 people are still seeking work. So given those new unemployment rates, obviously, we continue to focus on workforce development support. So I wanted to give a couple of reports on some different partnerships that we have. Our Medina County Manufacturing Partnership, we had been running this as an informal networking group with manufacturers, but a formal board has now been established for our industry sector partnership. They're now working on a new strategic plan, and we're currently working on raising $25,000, which will leverage another $50,000 in state funds that will go along with kind of the Spark Grant we received from the state earlier this year. This partnership also met with the Austrian Economic Chamber last month. They came to Ohio to share information on the Austrian apprenticeship model and how it can help high school students develop a career path for in-demand occupations. We were happy to partner with Velsor Profile in Valley City. We organized activities around their three-day visit. We had meetings in the Columbus State House, the Career Center, and a regional community college. It was very enlightening, and I think our manufacturers and our, some of the local school districts are excited about maybe putting a pilot program together that would get more and more young people involved in apprenticeships early on. Our pre-apprenticeship program is continuing into a new school year following a record number of completions by the end of June. We're trying to enhance that program and get more businesses involved, maybe with onsite business experiences. Our Career Coach Program is going well also. The online career assessment tool that we piloted last year, it's called Youth Science. It's a powerful tool that guides students into careers that will help figure out what their abilities are suited to. It's also helping us to analyze the county's future labor force. Mitchell Bemke, our career coach, is working with several school districts to increase the exposure of this program, including four new classes at Brunswick High School in multiple grades, as well as a career planning class at Black River. He's hoping to implement the assessment at Buckeye High School for the entire junior class, and he has proposals out to two other school districts. So this will obviously increase the number of one-on-one coaching sessions that are a follow-up to this assessment. We've also started working to market the Work Scholarship Program for the new school year. We've already received new donations from Medina Sunrise Rotary and the Kiwanis New this year. So a few other updates on our activities at Economic Development. Over the past quarter, we closed on the $120,000 loan to VCS Salon and Spa. You approved that earlier this year. That has closed. Because that kind of used up pretty much all of the capital we had in the fund here in the county, we're preparing a $500,000 funding application to the Ohio Department of Development that will be loaned to the Foundry Social for the build-out of a new banquet and event venue. We also have three new revolving loan fund committee members, so I'll be working on providing them an orientation before the end of the year. We'd like to, we've got a couple of more applications that are in the wings, so when we apply to the state for more money, if those grants from the state come through to the county, then we get to keep that money and revolve it internally. So we're excited about trying to do more of those in the coming year. The Medina County Land Bank update, we recently acquired a forfeited residential property in the city of Medina. We're preparing it for sale so that we can get it back on the active tax rolls, bring some income back to the county while we still have property tax. The Land Bank Board has finalized the agreements for the Welcome Home Ohio Projects awarded to Habitat for Humanity. We've also made an additional award for projects in Guilford Township. The state did appropriate additional funding for Welcome Home Ohio, and we're looking forward to applying for that. Again, we have some other projects again in the wings. The state did increase the amount of money that we could use for a single-family home. You heard from the Building Report that homes are at the $450,000 level, so this subsidy would actually allow us to subsidize up to $250,000 for a home, which puts those new homes within reach. The Land Bank has also been named by the county, thank you for that, as the lead entity for a new round of building demolition and site revitalization grants that have been awarded, that are being awarded by the Ohio Department of Development. In the current round, which ends next June, Medina County has $230,000 set aside specifically for our use. The Land Bank is looking at specific projects that we have to apply by their November 19th deadline. As I said, we're already talking to several developers of projects throughout the county to give us time to kind of get in as early as possible. We're still accepting what I'll call expressions of interest by the end of the month. For the Port Authority, the transfer of the Central Intermediate School from Wadsworth City Schools to the new developer is complete. That enabled them to have a timely application for historic tax credits. The developer plans to renovate it for mixed uses that include a concert venue and offices. The renovated auditorium, I'm told, will be ready for its first event on December 1st, that first weekend of December. The Port Authority was very pleased to be able to play a role in this development project. They're investing millions in the community, so that was a good turnaround. We're also waiting on the current round of new brownfields grants from the Ohio Department of Development. The new state budget authorized $1 million set aside a year in that program for each county, so we've got another $2 million in grants over the next two years that we can apply for, for Brownfields Program. One more quick event, our Medina County Business Awards is being held October 23rd, yes, two days from now. It is sold out, 250 people attending, so I know Colleen's on the list. Hopefully, the rest of you are as well. We're looking forward to celebrating some amazing companies and community leaders, so it should be a great event.
The project in downtown Wadsworth, it's so nice that there'll be so much going on there with events and stuff, and the restaurants will get more business, retail will get more business. It's really a nice project.
Yeah, and the city's been a great partner in, you know, creating new parks and just a lot of activity in the downtown area, and that's going to be, I think, a real jewel for the community.
Yes.
There's a Taylor Swift tribute in January that I expect to see everybody else at. I'll be there.
You know, they have a list of concerts and everything.
Yeah. No, there's some good acts going on.
This is my economic development era.
Thank you, Bethany. Appreciate it. That is what we have for Department Updates. We do have our recorder here. Lynda, did you have an update you wanted to share at all?
No, not at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here. It's good to see you in the meeting. So that takes us into our public comment. So anyone who's here for public comment will acknowledge you. You'll come up to the podium, share your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak. So are you folks here for public comment? So please come up to the podium, name, address, and then your time will begin. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tianlin Jian from Cleveland, 3568 West Boulevard, Cleveland, 44111. Yeah, I'm going to share with you my understanding of the threat from the Chinese Communist Party to this world, to the United States, at least about 20 aspects where they have been targeting. But we do not have so much time to do that. I will share a little bit. You know, in China, many, many people are practicing Falun Gong. What does it mean? Falun Gong followed the principle, truthfulness, benevolence, and forbearance. And however, because of practicing this, Chinese Communist Party have persecuted 100 million people in the last 26 years. It's so terrible. Nobody can imagine what they are doing. They not only persecute you economically, fiscally, they slaughter you. And a typical example is one Falun Gong practitioner. He has been organ harvested. The left liver and lung have been organ harvested partially. But at the second organ harvesting operation, he escaped from the operation bed, and with the help of a U.S. Under-Secretary of State, he escaped to the United States. He thought he's safe, but he's not safe. He has been constantly watched, followed, and his car tire been slashed, and also confronted whatever the car accident to try to kill him, and his house been broken into. Anyway, he's not safe. Either he was in Washington, D.C., or in New York. How about in this state? In Ohio, in OSU, we also have Falun Gong practitioners because they have three words on it, truthfulness, compassion, forbearance. So their cars, the tire been slashed, and the car was broken. And there are many such things. And also, you may know Chinese Confucian Institute Program. They influence so much in all universities, colleges, and high school, even middle school and primary schools. If they have the Confucian Institute Program installed there, the positions of Americans may be eliminated. One example, in Ashland University, Sang Ting Ting, she graduated from there and went to Indiana State to teach Chinese. She taught very well for a couple of years, but suddenly her position was eliminated just because the Confucian Institute. They want to control who is going to teach, what contents you are going to teach, and so the students are influenced by this Confucian Institute, and everything taught is Chinese Communist Party's ideology. There are many, many such examples, and I want to tell you only two aspects. Why Chinese came to the United States, they behave quite different from normal people. The Chinese propaganda is the issue. They use the propaganda to dominate, to control the people, what they think, what they behave. And not only in China they do that, they control, now they are controlling the U.S. Western medias and Chinese media.
Yeah.
The Western media, like New York Times, Washington Post, and so on, the Chinese spend $7 billion each year. They bought ads inserted on the newspaper, the whole section. So even you read, you do not know it's the Chinese Communist propaganda. And so...
Thank you. That's time.
Oh.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Oh, I see another hand raised to come on up. Name, address, and then your time will start.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jason Dignan. I live on Seymour Drive in Granger Township, and I've got a couple handouts here to facilitate the conversation, given the time limits. Hopefully you don't mind sharing. So I'm here today, I guess, to request your help, your leadership in resolving a situation that has started to occur on my property. So the map that's presented there is oriented north to south directionally. What has happened in this situation is subject property there, highlighted in red, had a septic mound that failed, had to be replaced. It was determined by the Health Department that the affluent discharge could not remain on the subject property, and they elected to pursue what's called, I believe, NPDES, which is an off-site discharge into stormwater system. No one looked at the subject property, or beyond the subject property, to see what the impact was. So effectively, what this does is move this affluent one lot down to my house, which is at the bottom, effectively 200 feet. The affluent discharges east into the stormwater and then comes south, and then comes to a culvert pipe that extends 100 feet on my property and discharges. culvert pipe that extends 100 feet on my property and discharges. The way that it is constructed, the swell, the contour, which I have later in the papers, there's not a lot of fall there. There is fall, but it's not meant to handle the discharge for septic affluent. If there's rain, it will wash through and it'll wash all the way back to, you can see on the far left, to the west, there's a little unnamed tributary, which is referenced in the paperwork for the Madana County Health Department in terms of where this discharge goes. Well, that's 400-plus feet to get there. It's not going there. And so it's sitting and pooling in my yard, in my neighbor's yard, creating what we believe is a health concern for us. And if it wasn't sufficient or appropriate to sit in their yard, why is it appropriate to sit in my yard? The next page there is a kind of current picture that was taken on August 24th. You can see standing water, pooling water. As you probably know, as residents in Madana County, we were in a regional drought in the month of August. And just to kind of back that up, you can see on the next page, I've got the rainfall for the month of August. There should not be any water in that ditch. That is all septic affluent that's flowing from that property, sitting there, pooling, creating a hazard, a potential hazard for my family and my neighbor's family. Final page, you can see, I pulled it from the county engineer's website. You can see the contour at the start, I've highlighted in yellow, where the culvert outlets at approximately 1170. These are two-foot fall increments. So you can see that's a very flat area. There is fall, but it's very flat, and most of the fall occurs on the western part of that. So I have a section of 80 to 100 feet where septic affluent is pooling. And the bottom piece there is a communication between my neighbor, property just north of me, with the Madana County Health Department, where they have highlighted, "The risk runs higher. When this office is not positive, the soil can provide adequate treatment and drainage. Poor soil may induce premature failure on systems where the result can be surface ponding, drainage, as well as potential groundwater contamination." And so from our perspective, the county has created a solution for one property owner that has created a problem for two other property owners, put our families at risk, created a health concern. And so that's why I'm here today to seek your leadership in creating a resolution.
Thank you. I, and actually, I was going to bring this up in discussion session, but I'll bring it up now. I did have a conversation last week with Krista Wasowski. Well, first it was with one of the trustees, and I don't know if...
I think Richard Pace called some of us.
We'd heard from some of them as well. And then I did speak with the Health Department, and my understanding is that they're aware of the situation, and they're working to have some kind of more broad solution, because I think the rest of the properties, adjacent properties, are, there's similar issues there. And I certainly don't know all the details and ins and outs of their approval process.
I think too, if you look at, with the same document you gave us, if you look to the paragraph above, it says that, they said there's no public health risk with these systems. They do not discharge wastewater. The water is treated to a standard acceptable with the Ohio Department of Health and Ohio EPA. These systems are tested annually, reported, and followed up on if service or more testing is required. So there's that paragraph before that you had just quoted. So it seemed, really, when you look at it, this is a dispute between the property owners and basically the Department of Health. And we have no jurisdiction with the Department of Health. Actually, we're more at a peer level. We put their ballot on the issue, or their issue on the ballot. But other than that, we don't do their budgeting. We don't, basically don't, we're actually, we have the ability to help, along with all the townships, the ability to elect one member on that, on the Board of Health. Cities actually have much more influence over the County Board of Health than the county does.
Okay, so I disagree with kind of two statements that were made there. I do agree that they're aware of the situation. They're not actively working towards a resolution, number one. Number two, you may not have control of the Madana County Health Department, but you do have control of the Highway Engineers Office, correct? Which also approved this discharge.
Well, that...
So this makes it a county issue.
Yeah, that's a separate elected official, too.
Well, the NPDS...
Are you not the executive of Madana County?
But the basis for denying, the basis of denying NPDS, it's purely administrative. So long as they are abiding by the EPA regulations and the health regulations, we do not have the ability to deny a permit. In other words, we just can't arbitrarily say, nope, you can't, even though they comply with all other aspects of the law. And I think that that's where the issue is, is with the Health Department.
But one of the, and the only other point I wanted to raise, the date of that email was August 22nd. My conversation with the Health Commissioner was a week ago Thursday, so October, whatever. Have you, have you had any communication with them since that time, since, in the last week, let's say?
So two representatives of the Madana County Health Department came on site to review the property, along with a trustee from Granger Township. And that was approximately, I'm going to say, October 6th, maybe?
Okay. So my understanding, and to Steve's point about, you know, direction and oversight, you know, even as it relates to the Engineers Office, we, they're elected officials responsible for their own departments. We have budgeting authority, but we don't have oversight on what an elected official does. But if they're otherwise compliant with the law, our hands are going to be tied there. But irrespective of that, my understanding from the conversation with the Health Commissioner was that they thought there might be some other, better solutions. No, the sense that I got from that conversation was not that this, that they felt like this was the best long-term solution for the situation, but that they were going to work on identifying some other possible solutions. So that was, like I say, less than a week ago, when it came to my attention, is when I had that conversation. And what I, what I'd like to think is that if we, if there's another, you know, few weeks here that will, some of those options will become identified by their operation, it's really not our role to identify those possible solutions and alternatives.
And who's the individual?
That was Krista Wasowski, who's the Commissioner of the Department of Health. Her. And so it was kind of, it was an interesting timing, because it had come on my radar. And earlier that day, she said she'd had a couple of conversations about it, and it was just kind of getting on her radar as well. So with any of these kinds of things, while being sympathetic to the situation in the meantime, and the fact that you've been struggling with it for a while, I'd like to give it a little bit of time for them to identify alternatives before we jump and say, this is, you know, unacceptable. And we could pound the table all we want, and it doesn't, if, you know, they're the ones who have to make those decisions.
So from your perspective, the solution is to basically bury the pipe?
I'm, I guess, impartial to what the solution is. So what our frustration is, is there's been no communication, there's no definitive document to point to, to say, this is why we chose this. And the Health Department has even admitted, within the paperwork that they provided us, there's nothing to cite, to point to, to say, hey, it's these three criteria, we measure them. It's very subjective versus objective. As a homeowner, if somebody's going to put a flu on my property, they want to say it's legal. Show me the objective analysis that said this was the right decision. They could have gone north to the stormwater drain, which would then outlet into Granger Road, the ditch that the county maintains. So the county decided, and they told us, we don't like to put it in open ditches. What do I have in my property? An open ditch. So the county made an active decision to take it to my property versus taking it to property that they would maintain. Right? So that's the frustration, is that communication. And to put this in perspective, I appreciate you want to say, give it two more weeks. This system, they estimate, puts out 300 gallons a day. 300 gallons, okay? Within 30 days, that's 9,000 gallons, okay? It's been over 60. Let's call it 18,000 gallons. Hard to visualize what that is, right? So perspective, a swimming pool, 30 feet by 15 feet by five feet deep, 17,000 gallons. So in the past two months, I've had a swimming pool of septic affluent put on my property. And you want to say, give it two more weeks. Every 60 days, there's another swimming pool, sitting on my property.
No, and...
And it doesn't flow out.
Right.
It goes into my water table.
No, and I'm certainly sympathetic to the circumstance that you've got with this. And I don't think it was anybody's intention that it would be, that this would be the outcome of this.
I agree.
It seems like...
Lack of diligence.
It seems like the natural place, now that we see that it's happening, it seems, when you look at topo maps, kind of likely that that was what was going to happen. But I have a lot of confidence coming out of my conversation with the Health Department that they're, that it is on their radar, and they're going to try to identify some alternatives. So, and you may want to reach out to Krista directly.
I will reach out to her. I have not communicated with her.
Yep. So, but if there's, you know, if it's not going in the right direction, feel free to follow up with us as well. Our hands are somewhat tied, but happy to...
You do agree this is an issue?
I think I would have problems with that sitting on my property as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? The room is cleared out a little bit, so not as many members of the public here. If there's nobody else here for public comment, we are moving into the discussion session. First up on that is our continued discussion of property tax relief. So in the week since our last meeting, and we're up against a deadline of next Tuesday, really will be our last regular meeting that we have to take any action on this homestead piggyback, or homestead expansion. We have heard from some other of our political subdivisions, some expressing support, some expressing opposition, some expressing something that lives between support and opposition as well. The thing, the main takeaway, I guess, I've had from any of those communications we've received is there is a consensus that some sort of tax relief needs to happen. That much has been consistent in our discussions, it's been consistent in even the opposing viewpoints. We've received feedback from some folks. We heard it last week with the Wadsworth School representatives who were here. So that much is a consensus. I think the concerns that we've seen is really over the methodology, particularly as it applies to entities that don't have inside millage. And certainly, I think we all share that concern. And had we been given a more surgical option to provide some of this relief to our most financially vulnerable populations, we'd most likely be using it. But that really isn't the option we have in front of us. We don't really have an option that gives us that ability. So from where I sit, in spite of some of the opposition we've received, I think we need to continue to proceed and move forward with adopting that. We have a draft resolution in our packet that does adopt the local homestead exemption pursuant to House Bill 96. My inclination would be to move forward on that at next week's meeting, but I wanted to at least give it one more meeting to see if we had any other public comment or any other thoughts brought to us. And I'll obviously hear what both of you have to say.
It's important to remember financially that the overwhelming majority was just a handful. These are reductions in their increases.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? That they're all going to get the reappraisal increases, except for a few exceptions. So it's not a cut for the overwhelming majority, it is a reduction in their increase just for next year.
Correct.
It's a one-year decision.
Right.
And so this is not a permanent decision that we're making to give much-needed relief to our seniors and our veterans in these tough income brackets.
I would agree. Obviously, I think everyone that responded said, yeah, there needs to be some tax relief. They just want somebody else to pay for it. And I think the question is, is who can afford it? And likewise, who needs the tax relief for those that are at least able to afford the tax? I know that we did have at least more than one entity identify adoption, owner occupancy credit as a means, as opposed to the homestead exemption. And I'll just, rather than doing a letter or something, I'll just publicly respond. We did, I did, as you know, originally, when we were looking at this, I did an email to you. I thought maybe we ought to be taking a look at that. But I thought, when the numbers started coming back as to what an owner occupancy credit would provide, is, as Brett did, for a $5.3 million tax relief that that would provide, doubling that credit, basically, the highest value properties receive almost the majority of the benefit. In fact, if you were talking about a $200,000 house and a $2 million house, 5% is a whole lot more on that. So for that 5.3 million, most of it would go to the wealthiest households. And it's not like they don't deserve, but I, we have to look at those that really need the relief. And that's the ones that are on the lower end of the value of the homes, the ones that are seeing that 20, 30, even 40% increase in their valuations. And I, those are the ones that I'm sympathetic to. We also saw that, according to Brett's number, the average relief countywide is not even $100 per qualifying property. So although that may look like an attractive, everybody that has a house is going to get the same percentage, you're spending $5.3 million in tax relief and getting basically about $100 or less to the average person. Here, we're literally talking $1,000 to seniors or even more for the disabled vets. And I think that targeted makes a whole lot more sense with a similar impacting cost and distribution to those that are also, that are other taxing authorities. So I am totally in agreement that the local option homestead exemption, in accordance with this, for this, for this next year, is the, probably the best use of that relief. And I think that, although I understand, for the school's standpoint, the uncertainty the General Assembly has introduced with their 40-plus bills and what they're going to do, but we know next year, even if none of the bills they have in advancing are going to take effect next year. In other words, people's tax bill is still going to go up in this county, and we need to provide targeted relief. And then hopefully, we can just pray that the General Assembly gets their act together and that there is significant tax relief for the subsequent years.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that we're not imposing anything on other subdivisions that we aren't doing ourselves. And in the coming weeks, we're going to have further discussions over our own elective reductions to the inside millage increase that we're receiving. And I think that's an important part of this as well, because in addition to the direct benefits that come from the expansion of the homestead, our elective reduction of inside millage is going to deliver some additional relief to county taxpayers as well. Certainly on a broader basis, which means the dollar amounts are going to be minimized, like you, the example you gave with the owner occupied tax credit. But I think, you know, we're kind of in a point in history where we're pointing to the folks who are doing something to try and help, albeit with imperfect solutions. And I'm proud, I think, to be on the side of, you know, leading the way to demonstrate our collective willingness to do something, rather than kind of kick the can and delay or do nothing, so.
And that's important. The inside millage roll, the rollback for us affects just us.
Right.
And so I think that that's where we're demonstrating that we're also willing to, if you will, take a haircut, or we're willing to also take a look at some of that reductions for those that are seeing increases.
And the inside millage, you know, I have complete faith in our department heads and our elected officials that they're going to understand the importance of this to our low-income seniors and disabled veterans when it comes to budget time and looking at their budgets and knowing that we're doing the right thing for our residents.
Okay, so next week, we can start talking about what the inside millage rollback ought to look like?
I think that's fine, yeah. I mean, and we did, the budget memorandum went out last week, so that kind of advised our department heads and other elected officials that these are things that we're taking seriously. And so it's going to be a different, a different budget cycle than we've had in years past because of that, because we've got, the increased costs that we, kind of at the very beginning of this discussion over property tax relief, we were identifying the $3, $4, $5 million of increased costs that we have just in, maybe just in...
JFS and things like that alone.
So we still have to absorb that or plan for absorbing that in addition to facilitating, you know, doing more with less, or at least the same amounts that we've had in prior years.
I know it was expressed in the communication that there was concerns that we're taking away some local control of some of the local jurisdictions. And I'll just point out, we are the only ones that can do a homestead exemption.
Right.
They do not have the authority. They can only roll back their millage generally across all their parcels. So actually, the more targeted benefit and that more targeted approach, we're the only ones that have that authority.
Yep.
In which case, I'm willing to exercise that authority.
And I know some, and some folks are considering rollbacks in addition to this.
Oh, cloverleaf, it certainly is.
Yep. And so I think that's, I think that's great, but I think we need to give them that clarity so they know exactly what to do.
100%.
Because cloverleaf didn't want to get dinged twice, and I completely understand that. I think some of the townships are going to continue to discuss those options as well, which I think sends a great message to the residents that they're willing to take the lead on that as well. But, you know, the reality is, these dollars are dollars in a lot of cases that people are planning on. You know, the increase, it was an increase we were planning on as well. But doing nothing isn't an option anymore. So taking these steps, I think, is the appropriate next step. And the fact, to Steve's point, that we're the only ones who can do this with, and provide such targeted relief, I think it becomes more of an obligation at that point to do it. So it sounds like everybody's in agreement. We'll consider that resolution next week and then also begin discussions on the inside millage rollback and kind of the scope of that.
Sounds good.
So, does that work for you, Matt? Great. Next, on the... Next on the list was broadband Ohio discussion.
Yeah, we had a, as you know, we've, the last two years, we've been members. We had a $1,000. We went down to the 500, so not on the board level. I did have communication with David Carrato. He suggested at this point, we don't find it necessary or as beneficial as we had hoped to continue providing support for that organization. They've, I'll say, less effective than we hoped. They certainly have a, as you know, they, they talk about broadband access for all entities that provide broadband services that include publicly-owned entities like Wadsworth and Fairlon, or even with our involvement with, for our port authority. But they've been less effective against, I'll just say, the investor-owned utilities and providers of internet. And so at this point, we wish them well, we'll try to continue communicating with them. Certainly CCAO, I think, is going to continue to have a presence on there. So we'll certainly from, as legislation emerges and as initiatives also at the state level, continue to support expanding broadband access throughout the areas that don't have broadband. We'll be supportive of that, but we don't, I don't see worth the $500. I think David Carrato had concurred with that. So I just wanted to make sure you're okay with this.
I think that, I think that logic makes perfect sense. If they were to get on board with stopping the expansion of it in places that already have plenty of it, I might change my mind on that. Because these communities like mine, where we've got three different trenches that consist of fiber feeds, are, and we've heard about that in public comment as well, but...
Amazingly, we have three or four in one, and then adjoining communities have none.
Right, right.
See, we're cutting our budget already.
Yeah. Colleen, do you have anything else for discussion?
I do not.
Matt, did you have anything else for discussion? Anybody else here for public discussion? Colleen has nothing else. Steve, do you have anything else?
Nothing else.
The only other thing I wanted to mention, we had a 911 committee meeting yesterday. There's some discussions related to the upgrades of the system that are, that are needed. Fortunately, most of that, I think, will be able to be covered with the, the user fees that the state has permitted. But when you start to look at the long-term picture of that, you start to really see, you know, a lot of these things, like, like everything, it seems, are shifting to more a cloud-based, subscription-type model. And the thing that our committee spent a lot of time on yesterday, we didn't make any decisions, we'll have a follow-up meeting in October, but is balancing the need for these upgrades with the financial commitments that we're making, that if we could look into our crystal ball and know that we're going to continue to have the support of that, that funding formula, they could continue. But if that disappears or is significantly modified, we could, we'd find ourselves in a spot where we've got a significant shortfall.
And obviously, there's no commitments in that future General Assembly, what they're going to do.
Right, right. So that uncertainty is really hampering, I think, our ability to provide some necessary upgrades to the, to the system. So we're going to continue to balance that. And I think I said October, but November, obviously, will be our next meeting, where we will hopefully take some, take some action on moving forward with the needed upgrades for the system, and we'll report more on that at the time, so. If there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a pending court action and compensation of a public employee.
Second the motion.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Thank you.